...costs. These are, operating includes everything from utilities to equipment, regular day, everyday equipment, not capital equipment. We'll talk about capital when we discuss CIP. Those are typically, most of the drivers that we would see. But it also includes materials. So, in this increase would be materials that, the increases for salt, for public works. All of the, any of those increases are built into that, that line item. Capital operating, this was something that was new last year. We had already, always had about a $40,000 capital operating, and it was really funding that was available for this building. Any, any capital expenditures for improving this facility were kind of put in there at 40,000. That way, we could do numerous different improvements throughout the year. Last year, I talked about wanting to shift a lot of items out of our bond package that we were applying a bond on for, and paying interest on, for items that were really more operational items. Vehicles like cruisers, some pickup trucks at PW, those type of items, I shifted out of the bond last year. You approved that, and this year, I've done the same thing, but I've made no change to the amount. We've kept the amount the same this year, but we still moved those, shifted those items, continued with that practice of not bonding for those items, not paying interest on them for multiple years. Next is, I want to just look at the increases first, I'm sorry, the decreases first. And so, we also have, the library had a slight decrease of about $84,000 over the, the total increase that was last year, as well as GA services had a decrease. This, the GA services last year, if you recall, that's where we saw a major spike in our GA services. We had always been budgeting right around $150,000 most years last year. That had increased by about $720,000 based on what we had expended the previous year. This year, we're proposing to reduce that by about 100,000. We've stabilized that. Just keep in mind, that's not $100,000 in total net, because we have a reimbursement. So if we say we're going to reduce our expenditures by 100,000, that means our revenue is decreasing 70,000. So that means the expenditures really is about 30,000. But you'll see it in your expenditure line, and then you'll need to look at what the offsetting revenue line item is for that amount. Solid waste and recycling, we had an increase last year. That's because we were, we hadn't funded some of the recycling changes that we had done from the previous year. We included that last year. This year, we'll get into this in more detail when we talk about the department, over, over department requests in the future workshops. But currently, as it sits, our increase over, of our total increases saw a decrease of 178,000 or a 3% reduction in what our overall increases were. Capital operating, reduced 9%, that's the 500,000. I'm sorry, we already talked of that. And then our increases, really the drivers are the intergovernmental. We saw a 2% over our, it was at 5%. I'm sure I got this right. Yeah, intergovernmental rather, was 3% of the total increase last year. This year, it's 5%. That means we're seeing a budget increase greater this year by 84,451. Our debt and TIF, this is a big shift for us. Last year, it was at a 39%, I'm sorry, 39% of, sorry, 25% of our total increases, category increases in FY '25. This year, it's 62% of our overall increases. So we're seeing that shift of about 37%. And then county tax being the last one, seeing an increase over last year of, was 3%. This year, it's 6%. Again, these are over the overall increases of the budget. We'll get into what the actual requests are as far as increases and decreases. But I wanted you to see where that table's running this year, so you can, you can do a comparison from year to year on that. What I want to start off doing is just being able to walk you through your, your budget book, so that you have a good understanding of what we have in here. We try to, try to add additional information than you've had in previous years, so you could do some of your own homework, reference that. That'll be available, like I said, to the public as well, so they'll be able to go through that and see what's driving the budget. So your, your second tab in really will bring you right to your expenditure tab. That expenditure tab is a breakdown of cost categories as far as administration, what we would call community services, our fiscal services, public safety, and then public works, and intergovernmental programs, and then as well as what we currently have for education. So this gives you a good summary. When I talked before about the 5.9% 96%, you'll see that on that second page at the very bottom. That's where that, that number's coming from. So it's taking a look at all of our expenditures and factoring in what the, the increase from last year is within our budget. If you then turn to the next page, this one here is called master list. This is just of the municipal operating budget. So when I shared with you that the municipal operating budget is increasing 3, 3.1%, this is where you'll find those items. So these are the department line items for the municipal city operations. And you'll see where the, the total increase over last year is 1,285,524. That's on the second page of the, of the master list. If you turn the page, what's new this year is the supplemental tabs. This is, the mayor had mentioned this to you. This is, the first page of that is a summary of the three supplemental budgets that you'll be looking at. The first one being an admin supplemental. I'll walk through that in a minute. Then the next one is a council supplemental, and then the third one is the non-municipal supplemental. The admin municipal, I'm sorry, the admin supplemental, if you turn that page, you'll see exactly what I'm looking at currently. These are items that, if you recall, the budget directive for the city manager in the FY '26 budget was, keep current programs, no increase in staff. That's what your budget has. These items are some budget drivers that we're seeing that's not in the previous budget, but will need to be considered by you on how you'd like to proceed with these. We signed a new solid waste and recycling contract, and we signed that with Casella. So they'll be our, our new provider for solid waste. Within that budget, we, we had included one of the drivers that we've been talking about now for a while, a couple of years now, is about the need of going to automated services. So automated services is, means that we will have bins that we'll need to make available to the public, so that the automated waste truck can come up, be able to grab the bins without a person on the back of these rubbish trucks. This is the total, the high-end cost. This is if every, every home that we have, that we're currently picking up for, has a solid waste in a recycling bin. Not everybody participates in recycling, we know that. So that number could potentially reduce, be reduced depending on how many we actually distribute, in purchase rather. So that number's in here. This is, we'll talk more about this, because the plan allows for us to do something in year one of the five-year agreement, and, and it also includes our provider managing the bins, which is when we're talking about, you know, somewhere's close to 12,000? A little less, 11? Somewhere's in there. That's, that's per, that's potentially two per location. Having a third-party administrator that deliver those, manage those, that, that's what's in that number, as well as, as I said before, two bins for each resident. Bulky waste disposal, this was the pilot program that we started two years ago now, I believe. And this was changing the spring cleanup from curbside every two years, or every other year, to now being able to take your bulky waste and bring it directly to main waste to energy, provide your address. They then keep a tab. That bill then comes to the city, and we're paying for the bulky waste. Again, this is one, when we get into this, we'll talk a little bit more about some cost saving that we've seen, also concerns that we have with the existing program, whether or not it's consistent that it's only Auburn residents that are bringing their bulky waste there. It's very difficult for us to be able to prove that. If we see a commercial hauler come in, they're not really doing a lot to screen that or question that. We randomly will assign somebody from Public Works to spot check. However, you're not, you know, there's, you're never going to get to 100% on the current system we have now, so we need to discuss that further as we, as we work through the budget. The other piece that kind of creeped up on us over the last year or two was the home, homeless encampments, campsite areas that we've been cleaning up. The number was high to begin with, because we had a lot of areas that we're cleaning up, but what we're anticipating is, as that balances out, now that we've been doing this for a couple of years, we believe it's hitting right around $35,000 a year. These numbers were bulky waste in the cleanup. Those were being taken from our solid waste recycling line item, and we've been doing well with our recycling numbers, which means that a lot of our materials being sold, we're not spending as much as we had anticipated. So we've been able to absorb this in that line item without necessarily having a line item for these two new programs. But moving forward, we want to make sure that those are included in the budget, so they're, they're listed here as a supplemental. The next item is code enforcement. This is for an additional position. As we discussed when we talked about the vacant private buildings ordinance that we discussed a few weeks ago, the enforcement of that really would require an additional person, as well as someone being able to address some of the other violations that we know are currently occurring within the city. Right now, we're very either permit-driven or call-driven, but not really any proactive measures taking place within the code enforcement because of the staffing we have. Really, we have a supervisor and two staff members. They're basically managing what we have coming in, for calls and inspections for permits. That's what they do. If somebody has a new deck, someone has a septic system, they're out there inspecting those, and then they're also managing complaints that come in. But really, no capacity for any additional work. And so this is adding that position. If you recall, we introduced the EMS 30 ambulance at the, in the FY '25 budget. That just started, because we said we would do it towards the, for 40 hour, 40 hours a week, an additional third ambulance out. That just started maybe last week or the week before. We'll do that for the remaining of the year, remainder of the year. This is if you were to take that third ambulance now and continue that for the additional weeks for the full FY '26 year. What you currently have in the budget is the exact same coverage that you, you've approved for that many weeks. If you want to expand it for the full year, that's the cost to do that. When we get into the department discussions, we'll also talk about what we could see for potential revenue offset for that expense, because if we, we have a third ambulance. There may be some numbers that we're pulling that maybe one of our partners were responding to, like United Ambulance or another community. But really, the, the need for that additional 40 hours a week during peak hours is to provide better quality service to those who are calling, because right now, they're, basically, they're at a call, and they're immediately getting a call, they're getting on the radio for the next call. So that means they're moving that call along, getting the transport, the transfer rather, at the hospital done, and then they're immediately trying to jump to that next call. Not a lot of reprieve in between, not a lot of time for reporting, resupplying, stocking the ambulance, all that. So that third ambulance allows for that to take place. So it may not be, we may not see the same EMS offset that we see on the two ambulances that we have out, only because there's, they're building in some reprieve for the, for those two ambulances. And so, but we'll talk more about that as we, we get through. Homeless services, you'll see this number in here twice. Once is under the admin, the, the amount rather, the 400,000. You'll see in here twice. Once is, you know, if there's additional services that we need to apply for homeless outreach, programming, this is what we're recommending, a number in between this, this, this 400,000. But we also received a request that you'll see under non-municipal from Cadence Kitchen for $400,000. As a council, you'll need to sign, and we'll have discussions about what that looks like as we, as we get to those non-municipal. The next two items are organic waste. As part of the bid process for the new, for the solid waste and recycling bid that went out, organic waste was included in that. If you recall, the, the task force that worked on the bid included organic waste. We had a lot of conversations about, is there an opportunity to transfer out organic waste out of our solid waste stream, how that could be beneficial. Solid waste is very wet, heavy, not great for our incinerary, main waste to energy. So it was an operating, an opportunity to transfer some of that out. We had started a pilot program last year. We had set up two locations, one at Grace Long Road, one at Engine 2 on South Main Street, collecting some organic waste. The school department recently is doing a pilot project at Sherwood Heights School, and they're trying to move some of their organic waste out of their solid waste. This proposal is twofold. One is, is there an opportunity to include organic waste curbside? What we currently have within the bid that came forward was a company that would actually provide the, the curbside at a subscription fee of about $10 a month per participant. They would subscribe, it would be $10. The money that we have in here for the $107,000, this is if you would like to provide incentive to try to encourage people to be able to do that. You could, you could, this could vary in a lot of different ways. You could say, all right, we could take and reduce the $10 a month and offset that by a couple dollars a month, and the city would supplement that difference. Or you could say, first 500 people the first year that participate, it's free, we'll cover it. That's what that amount covers. Or you can, you can just have the, the straight subscription and, and not have a supplemental. We put the amount in there, so we could have the discussion. The other line item for that organic waste is regarding the drop site collection. So we took a look at areas like the senior center, the PAL Center, all the schools, and we included those in as drop sites, as well as still providing a couple community drop sites that we currently have. So if somebody's still not subscribing, that's fine, we have a location. People could still participate. And the cost for us to do that annually, to provide that service is 25,400 if we want to do that. And what we'll be able to do is really be able to pull, what's that tonnage that we're removing from our solid waste that's organic? Be able to really assess that, evaluate that, depending on what that tonnage looks like. If we're paying $47 a ton, that main waste of energy, we've made that reduction. But also, is main waste of energy, by reducing that, becoming more efficient in its burning of its waste. So we'll, we'll be able to work through several of those numbers. We'll work with the, the, the work group, the sustainability work group, as we collect that information and have them kind of dig into those numbers. The last tab, the last item that you see under the supplemental consideration is the senior tax reimbursement program. This is the ordinance that you passed. The way that the ordinance was written was that if funded, then the program would be, become available. We had done some, some cost estimating, if it's around a $600 per household, what that could potentially look like. You're coming at, based on the numbers that we believe we would see on, based on the numbers from those who applied for the tax stabilization when the state offered the program, and then trying to back into that with those that would be eligible for the tax fairness credit, trying to determine what that amount would be. That's the estimate that we have. You could still, whatever estimate, whatever number you, if you choose to include on here, that's what, you could make that. And then whatever money is available would then be dispersed equally amongst all those who apply and are approved. So we don't have to have the exact number. The first year, we can put a number in if you choose, and then be able to distribute that out. So I spent a little bit more time on the supplemental, because those are the numbers that we currently have. The numbers that I'll need from you, and ones that we can dig into the next workshop, is items that you have as a council. So you might have some programs, projects that you've been really looking at, or items that you're pulling and saying, the ones from the admin ones are the ones that I really want to be considered. However this works, that's what we're going to need in that council tab. And so we'll, we'll start including that, but if you can provide me that feedback, that way the, the rest of the council can be discussing that at the future workshops, that would be helpful. The next workshop would really be ideal. And I know we might add some of these as we discuss and as we kind of work through the workshops, or get through the workshops, rather. The, the last tab is the one that I mentioned regarding the non-municipal, non-municipal requests. I won't go through those, but you have them there, and they're available for you. The next tab, which is that green tab, that tab is the, your intergovernmental documents. So included in here, I have the, the actual document from the county, from the treasurer's office, for what our actual county taxes. So you'll see that number. You'll see the budget memo for City Link is in here. You did have Larry Allen from AVCOG, who's assigned to LATC, give you a budget presentation at our last meeting. That's the document that he worked from. LA 911 has an increase in the budget. You'll see exactly where their breakdown for that increase is. It's 136 for each city. You'll see how that's broken Just a real quick for you, for, for this, really the driver on their increase is that they had about, they had one and a half positions that were frozen at last year. They're trying to bring those positions back in, and that's included in here. One thing that was recommended when, if you, for those who may not recall, City of Lewiston, City of Auburn, the manager and the finance directors from both cities sit down with each of your governmental requests, except for county. That's just handed to us, and we have to pay it. So the inter, the other intergovernmental, we actually sit down, we discuss their budget. We review it, we might make recommendations. One of the recommendations that we had was, there was still some, there's a ceiling and a floor for their fund balance within 911. We made a recommendation that they pull additional funds from their, from their fund balance to apply it to the budget, and so that, that change was, was made. And then the, the last one is the communication that we, I'm sorry, there's one more after this. One is the communication from LA Arts, and then the last one, and the one that I didn't mention, I apologize, is the, some documentation, budget information for you from the airport. Auburn-Lewiston Airport is again proposing this year, I think this is for the second or third year anyway, no increase in their, in their budget on what they're asking from the two municipalities. One thing that's important to note for the airport is the, the way that the inter-local agreement is written, you have to at least fund it for the amount that you funded last year. Auburn or Lewiston couldn't say, we want to reduce that amount, the municipal obligation. It has to at least be at what it was funded last year, and that's what they're recommending this year. So, these other budgets are one that I'll constantly be in communication with the City of Lewiston as they're working through their budget, because if they choose to reduce, say, 911 by a certain amount, we usually match that reduction. And so, so as they work through the budget, we'll be communicating if any adjustments need to be made. I'll make sure I communicate that to you. The next tab in your budget book is your revenues. We break this out by general governmental, and then we have revenues that are really more tied towards certain department revenue items. Some of that has to do with a license or a fee. Parking would include fines for parking. All those are broken down for you. And, and then we also included the current breakdown for what the school has identified for their revenue items. And when the superintendent comes in on April 7th, we'll get into that further with, with her. But if you have any questions about that during our discussions, it'll be important for you to make note of that. Councilor Platts is serving on the school board, getting that information to him, so that he can make sure he's bringing it to the school board. Will be important, so we're not waiting to the, to the 7th, when they've come close to finishing their work, and then we have some questions or suggestions. So it'll be important to keep that communication open. Your next tab is your, starts off with the, the five-year capital improvement plan. And what you see currently, and we haven't done this in the past, in the past, I provided you the plan, and the plan included items in the FY '26 column that I was not recommending. And that created a lot of confusion, because you could be seeing something if you're looking at the plan, however, it's not being recommended. It's something that I might be pushing out two or three years. So I made, I sat down with the team, we worked through that, we made those adjustments, and, and so those adjustments are already accounted for. The total that you'll see in the FY '26 column of this, of the five-year plan is the city manager's recommendation for the, for the bond amount. I'm sorry, bond and any other special financing, which could be the EMS account or the operational. After the five-year plan, if you turn the pages, I think there's a few pages for the five-year plan, you'll then get to the FY '26 page. This is, at the top, it just says FY '26 bonds. It's a one-page sheet. Those are the items that I'm proposing. And then, as I mentioned, the other funds, FY '26 other funds are the items that, that we're recommending. We're going to get into more of the five-year plan tonight, we'll have time. And so, in a minute, we're going to shift to the CIP plan, because based on charter, you need to adopt the plan sooner than you do some of the other items. So I want to make sure Dan Goyat, our city engineer will come up, we'll work through the, the five-year plan. We'll talk about that. And then at the next workshop, you're going to be getting more information regarding some of these items in FY '26. You'll get a full presentation on the Engine 2 fire station. You need to, it's important for you to see what the final drawings are looking like, what the final costs are coming in at. The budget amount in here is for the total amount of what that project will cost. You've been paying for this over the last, this will be the third year that you're making payments, or bonding rather, for, for Engine 2. So I want to make sure you're getting a full presentation on, on that project, and be fully updated before we move forward. And then a few other items, we'll make sure we get into more discussions, especially roads and some of the other items that's on here. And then after that sheet are all the detailed sheets, and I might need to go back and look at it, bless you. I might need to go back and look at it, Kelsey, but I think the, the detailed sheets on here are just the are just the items we're proposing in the FY '26. So again, you won't see, that was the other confusion before. You might go through and see a detailed sheet of something that we weren't recommending, but you were seeing the detailed sheet and wondering, where is that in here? So now you're only seeing the items that are being proposed. And it gets you more details, gets you a photo, gets you a little bit about why, the explanation. Uh, we provide the description and the justification and, uh, where it's going to be located, what department is this request coming from. So it gets you a lot more information on those sheets. And we'll go through those, uh, when we talk about the bond. We'll, we'll get into those one by one as we work through that. Your next tab has to do with debt. Because we're going to be having a big conversation this year in the FY '26 budget regarding debt. Because we need to be able to provide you a good outlook, not only looking back to what we are currently with our bonds, what's being retired, what are these bonds, what do they look like, but also, we'll be providing you another document, and it'll be coming soon. And the, uh, the other document is what we're anticipating for bonds in the future as it pertains to the public safety. Uh, so you need to know what that budget schedule looks like, when those years will be hitting. So you have two documents in there, they're, they're larger documents, you open them up, they'll provide you multiple years to get them on 11 by 17 sheet. They're kind of small. When you get the PDF version, you'll be able to zoom in on that and really be able to look at the numbers. So. Also included in here, we thought that this would be a good document for you. If you go, the two-folded tabs, um, papers, you turn those over. And then you'll see one that says Moors and Cabot. Um, we felt this would be a really good document for you. And, um, this, this is our bonding statement. A lot of work goes into, um, every bond that we present, uh, to our bonding agent. And, uh, Kelsey does a great job of pulling a ton of that information, getting it in here. It's really, if you really want to know what's happening, what have we been working on, what are our future projects, uh, what's our current services look like, all those. This is a great document for you to just even have and know that it exists. And so, um, so we, we thought it would be good to include it. This is your light reading, um, late at night, you can kind of cruise through that. So, um, the next tab, only because it's the timing of when we do the assessor report, and then we get a bit of a gap, and then we start talking about budget. So just as, because you might not know where you, what you did with that presentation, that information that came from our city assessor, Karen Skaman, we put her presentation in here for you. And again, it's a good document to refer back to. The very end of, um, not the very end. The end of her presentation will be before you get to the, the annual finance report. and this is the municipal value report. It's a good document to be able to go through. So when you look at numbers that I have in the budget, and you say, where is that number coming from? A lot of that's coming from this valuation report. And so you'll be able to confirm that. Now, sometimes, the MVR. Sometimes there's other numbers that are, that are included in there or backed out of there. Um, but if you've got a question on it, that'll be, this'll be where you can go to and then ask for a clarifying question if it seems like it's not really lining up with the number that we're looking at. The annual finance report for FY, um, 23 is included in here. Uh, the work for, this is the audit. The work underway for the FY '24 audit is progressing well. I think we will have, have the audit complete, okay? Let's say May. So, um, we're currently waiting on some items from school, uh, that's in the final review. All the city's items are done and complete. And so, um, as that still progresses, we meet with, uh, the finance team, the, the city side and the school side, as well as the superintendent, myself. We're meeting about every, had been every two weeks, and now I think we're at least monthly. Uh, we're meeting just to get the updates. The team is meeting weekly with the auditors, just to say, here are the items that are still outstanding, where are we on these, and when is it going to be completed, and what roadblocks do we have? So. Um, and I think you've been hearing that through the quarterly, uh, recommendations. That was a great recommendation by Council Platts to say, hey, give us a quarterly so we know where we are moving into this year. Hopefully that's been helpful for you. So. Uh, so that concludes your budget book and the overview. And again, like I said, we will, uh, we will be, um, spending more time on each of these tabs as we work through in these workshops. Uh, and we will, uh, we'll certainly be updating them for you as we move forward. So if you want to go ahead and go back to your citywide five-year CIP plan. This is where I want to spend a little bit of time. We don't go, we don't dig a lot into the future years, but I think it's important for you to know what's on the horizon. Um, we keep making, um, some improvements to this document every year. Um, last year, if you recall, we pulled out, we now have all fleet items all together in one, one, um, category. Um, that was a big improvement where also, we also did, um, facilities, we broke that out. What you'll see in the future document, we're working on that now as we frame it up. What you'll see in a future document is, you'll actually see every facility we have in the city. And then you'll see the future years of what we're anticipating for each of those buildings. Now that we've taken over facilities citywide, including all the school buildings, it's important for us to really start tracking where are some of our drivers are going to be coming with future bonding to make sure we're maintaining our, our facilities maintenance schedules. So you'll start seeing that. Uh, the team and I, we worked through that, talked about it, um, just in the last few weeks as we were preparing this document, on why it would be important for each of these categories just to be broken out by buildings. So you'll be able to see that. Uh, the team has it now. They have, they have all that kind of built in. Uh, we have, um, built-in meaning that we've have, we have each facility identified. Some of the future years, we're still working through. Uh, but we have, um, we're, we're improving our asset, uh, management system. That's a constant improvement that we have. And, uh, I think I just kicked that cord. So. I'm not using that, so it's okay. Um, we're making improvements to that asset management. That's something will be coming in soon and providing a good presentation and overview of what we're tracking. When we say assets, we're talking down to, um, every parking sign, every, um, stop sign in the city. We're capturing, we're, we're collecting all that information. So you'll be able to see, see a full asset for us, for, as a city. so let's talk about the five-year plan. Dan's here to make sure I don't go too far off. Mayor?
Yeah, but before, just to make sure we all have the right pages here. Does this end, uh, on education, see attached list? Because there's no total. Okay. Can you add, um, a total, a grand total by year at, at the bottom?
We can, yes.
That'd be great.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, we'll do that. We'll give you an updated sheet. Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, this version has it. I think it just got cut off when we were doing it. Um, so the five-year plan, we'll spend a little bit of time going through, um, obviously focusing mostly on FY '26 in some areas. But I want you to be aware of some future, future impacts. Um, if you look at airport right now, it's just a, a two-year outlook. Airport had originally asked for that terminal parking lot interest reconstruction, that 175 in FY '26. Lewiston decided they did not want to fund that in FY '26, so we moved it to FY '27. So that's why you see the shift there. Um, city clerk, that's pretty consistent. I think we did get some feedback last year about, is that something we should be putting in operating? Um, and, uh, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that serve us better? So you'll see in the other funds, when you get to FY '26, you're going to see records restoration of 50,000. So we are doing that. We're not bonding that amount, but you're going to see it in the five-year plan. Eventually, what I'd like to do, um, is actually start working that right out of, um, operating and just, it's out of the operating capital, and just put that right into our operating costs. So that way there, it's not even an item that you'll see. But, um, just with other increases, I thought it was probably best to just continue that for this year, but we'll work that out. Um, really, fire apparatus is an area that we want to make sure we're having some conversations about. The, um, the chief will, will be able to get into some of this when we break down, if we have more conversations about it. The, uh, apparatus reconditioning is something that we, we've started doing. Some of this is about trying to take a look at our fire engines. Is there a way that we can expand the life expectancy of some of these to get us a little further along, especially because we know that it's now taking us three years from when we place the order for a fire apparatus till, till it's delivered. And so, uh, so the chief has been looking at some of our, um, apparatus to see if we can do that. He originally had requested, uh, wanted these to be in this year. I moved that out to next year. Um, just because, just timing. We have other projects that are underway. Uh, Engine, Engine 3 is a real driver. So there's a lot of things, I'm sorry, Engine 2. Engine 2 fire station replacement is a real driver on why a lot of items were moved out. Uh, just because of the, the, that came in higher in budget than what we had anticipated. If you were to go back and look at your five-year plan, um, I think we were sitting probably around $2 million. I think is what we're anticipating for year three. Um, and so you'll see where now we're, we're asking a lot more. Cause just because of the way the numbers have come in. And we'll get, we'll get in more detail on that when we do the full presentation. But I just want you to know kind of why, why I'm making certain recommendations for the FY '27, uh, bond outside of this year. There's some other items, um, within fire. I think we're, uh, as we move forward with these, there's certain, uh, the rescue boat has to be replaced. That's not a, that's, there's no option on that that has, um, met its life expectancy, and it's just not as operational as it should be. We have some concerns with it. Um, and then the airfield station system replacement, you'll see that every five, six years is when we, um, have to make adjust, changes to that system. Um, and then, um, the EMS items, again, that's coming out of your EMS capital reserve account. So as you see those items, we move, we allocate the ambulance replacement, that's because of a lease that we have on those. And then, um, and then, uh, some of the items that we constantly look to replace and update. Um, IT, we're not anticipating any major changes within IT. One thing that I've asked, uh, for the IT director to do is, you know, we were, maybe we'll do some fiber this year, then it was like, we'll wait a couple of years, we'll do some more fiber. I've just worked in about $50,000 for fiber over the next five years. That's still not going to get us where we need to be, but it's, it's taking our, some of our fiber enhancements and breaking it out so that we're, we're constantly making some fiber improvements. Uh, some of that is, um, getting fiber out to certain areas where we're expanding, or we might have additional resources. Um, and we want to make sure that we're getting our network out there. Uh, Kitty Hawk is, is probably the 67 Kitty Hawk is the one that we're doing this year. Um, and then by doing that, though, we're able to also include the airport, because we're heading right out to 67 Kitty Hawk, we're able to bring the airport in on that. So you'll see that consistently. Security camera project, that's another one. It just seems like every year we either have cameras that need to be replaced, or we're expanding cameras in other areas. So this is another one where I just said, put it, give me a number every year of where we think we can manage the workload of getting these queued up in a, a replacement, um, um, process, anyway. Tricaster, the reason why you've been having your meetings in here and not in the community room is we need to replace the tricaster. That's, I've just given you the technology, knowledge that I have. So, we can bring in, you have more questions about it, we can dig into it. But we've been, basically if you go in, you'll see this camera's pulled off the wall because they're in here now as they broken, have broken down. We just don't have replacements for that. And so that's why we're operating in here. Um, your agenda meeting software for IT, uh, this is another one that I, um, I moved to an operating capital. Really don't want software to be included in your capital expenditures. But this is one that came up that we've been identifying as, uh, we think it would be a very beneficial, um, software system for managing all the meetings that we have with all the various committees, um, managing all the documents for those. Um, right now, it's a pretty big lift on when, all the different committees to make sure, uh, the managing of the agendas, minutes, all of that. Um, you know, there's some potential here to also expand so that if you're looking at a council, um, item where, um, an order was passed, you'll be able to also, we'll see where we're at on this system, but which one we pick, choose, uh, when we go out to bid. But is there an option there to actually click on that order, and that actually takes you to the video of the meeting where you actually passed that order? So, being able to manage that and manage each of the meetings so that the public has good access and can see some of the work that's been done will be important. So, uh, so that's listed in here. About ready to get to Dan's items here in a minute. Um, Norway, Ingersoll, um, there were several items FY '27 that were requested in FY '26. Um, some of these we'll look at for some of our operating, depending on where we come in for operating this year. We'll try to get some of the, especially Ingersoll, um, some of the, um, the floor and rubber, um, improvements. Replacing the turf, that was in this year. Um, I think what I wanted to do was spend a little bit more time, really being able to research that, assess what we currently have. That, that turf, based on when we purchased it, its wear and tear, it's, it's time for us to take a look at replacing that. Um, but I did push it off one more year, let us get some more information, and then have a bigger conversation from you on, okay, what's, what do we want to do with Ingersoll moving forward? If, if we're going to continue operating this as a turf facility, we're going to continue. Um, currently, we're limited on the amount of months. Is there even, is it even cost-effective to try to put HVAC in there for, um, for the summer months? Is that cost-effective for us? We need to dig into those numbers more. So I wanted to make sure we had a good, a good package for you, uh, when we start talking about that. What I'd like to do on some of these projects we're flagging now, we will work these through, um, prior to the budget next year. So that way there, we've had plenty of time to really spend some time on it. Then when it comes up in the budget, it's like, oh, we've already, we've already talked about this in a workshop, and you already have a lot of information. So Dan's here to talk about some of our future years. You'll see where some of this is shifting, especially on reconstruction and, uh, major drainage. Typically, we're about a half a million. We've talked about why that ink, we might not have talked about why that increased. I think we did, um, because of Stetson Road. Um, and some of this will be adjusting based on the assessment, when the, the road assessment is completed, we'll take a look at that. We'll have a better idea what should, um, I think Dan already knows, his team is, is all over this to know which roads we want to make sure we're doing a resurfacing before it gets to a certain tipping point, all that. But Dan, you want to walk through some of that?
I think I briefed you a little bit the last time I was here when we talked about the road condition assessment and the whole thing.
Well, well, that stinks. Um, I believe I briefed you a little bit last time when I was here talking about the road condition assessment, and that we'll get a, a better handle on specific roads and sections of roads that we're looking to do within the next five years. Uh, we do have a plan right now for the next five years. Whether or not that shifts, um, is yet to be seen. One thing we try to accommodate or anticipate as best we can is what the state is going to be doing on state aid roads and what they're not going to be doing and what the city should be doing. It's, it's kind of a balancing act where we try to maximize city dollars along with state dollars and federal dollars so that we can get the, the biggest bang for our buck in terms of what we get done and where we get it done. Um, you can see that, um, as Manager Crowell said, we, major drainage is a big increase this year, and then it levels back out to the 500,000 that you'll typically see. Um, we are a NPTZ, uh, National Pollution, National Pollution Discharge Eliminations- We are a NPT's National Pollution, National Pollution Discharge Eliminations System community, which means we have a separate stormwater system, and we have reporting requirements with the federal government, EPA, and that's where a lot of that money gets spent, as well as we do a lot of camera work within the city to identify where our biggest risks are as it relates to stormwater infrastructure. It's kind of a, not a very sexy topic, no one likes to talk about it, but everyone realizes and notices when their streets flood. So we, we've gone up Turner Street all the way to the gully to Pettingill Park. We've done the old box culvert under New Auburn. We've done portions of Court Street all the way up the, up the hill, and the major trunk lines, and we've identified sections that need repair. This year, we're doing a big lining, well, small 300-foot lining project right here in front of City Hall where there's the bottom of the culvert. It's actually a 36-inch brick culvert that was originally sewer that discharged under the bridge is now stormwater. There are sections of the bottom of that that are missing, and it's not, if it fails, it's not a good place to fail. So we're doing a lining project there. So those are the types of things that this money takes, that we use this money for. MDOT match, that's where we try to leverage city money with, against state and federal money. A lot of the state programs are a 50-50 match. The federal 80-20 is, it's no longer what it used to be. That money used to be allocated through ATRC from the state. ATRC used to have two point, roughly $2.6 million to spend in the ATRC communities. The state has since taken all that money back and divvied it up in all these other programs, most of which are 50-50 match. So we don't get as much as we used to for that MDOT match money in terms of those projects. MDOT match, we use for the UPI program, the MPI program, the, all those different acronyms that basically means the state will give you 50% of the money to fix a state aid road. So we use that to do things like Mount Auburn Avenue. You'll notice this year, we're doing a big paving project this summer on Mount Auburn Avenue from the BJ's, where we ended the last Mount Auburn Avenue project, that BJ's intersection to the intersection with the lights. That will all be repaved. You can see it's, it's needing that, it's just a grind and overlay. So that money you can see fluctuates year to year. We average one to one and a half million dollars needing to match with state funds every year, so that's where that number is. Resurfacing, next year, the more money we can get in resurfacing, or the more money we need, the better. That means we're essentially not catching up, but we're doing a better job of identifying roads where a resurfacing project will extend the life of the road without spending a significant amount of money. It looks like a significant amount of money, obviously 927,000, but you get miles and miles of road versus 927,000 on a reconstruction project gets you barely a third of a mile. So, things cost a lot now. Retaining walls, we're doing our assessment now. We're about a third of the way through. That 20,000 is to, when we get that assessment, identify our most significant need in terms of retaining wall, repair, replacement, and as for the design work so that the construction can be funded in next year's CIP. Lake Grove Park, that's the parking lot. If you've been out there, it's a very popular place now with the new playground. That's the parking lot, reconstruction, basketball court reconstruction, as well as additional parking spots outside of the fence. Sidewalk repairs, that's just a lot of the rapid flash beacon installation, whether we do a race speed table somewhere, those are spread throughout the city, not necessarily identified, but more of a council-directed, this has really become a problem area, or we have a problem area somewhere on a school walking route where the sidewalks failed, but we're not doing roadwork. We can spend this money to fix that sidewalk. Downtown parking walkability, that's these next two years, that's for grant we received, the match money, and the small master plan study, that's for things like the Dennison-Turner Street intersection work, that's currently in design right now. The Court Street, not multi-use, but the Court Street safety improvements, that's going to be under contract shortly with Coral Palmer. We might add safety improvements along with the safety improvements that are anticipated to be designed around the school, Fairview, that's what that money's used for.
So as you see, we got a lot of projects there. Some of them shift. Most of Dan's items are always in that six, seven million dollar range, somewhere's in there. We try to stay pretty consistent with that. Where you'll start seeing some of the numbers shift, I won't go in, you know, we already, the comprehensive plan, some of this is regarding the actual comprehensive plan program, but then also there's money in future years for actual implementation of the comprehensive plan, to make sure we have those funds available. And then dangerous buildings and junk yards are pretty consistent. And then some of our traffic coming and neighborhood safety measures, we've kicked out, kicked it to the following year, just because some of these studies need to come in, so there won't be any actual funding that we will need. We'll wait and see where the studies come in and what projects we want to identify. And then LETC bus replacement's consistent, 50,000. We won't need a new bus replacement, I believe, until FY2028 before we actually budget for it. And even then, that means that's a FY probably 29, FY 30 delivery, because that's taking a couple of years as well. Public services, you'll see on here where we do break this, break this out from road maintenance, equipment, again, we really, we really reduced that in this year's budget just because some of our other budget drivers, and we, we focus on what were the priorities that they had, that mini excavator as well as a trailer, that was a major priority for them based on the amount of use that we have, rentals that we currently, you know, we're currently renting that piece of equipment. To be able to have that available to do the work that's necessary was a high priority for them. The recreation and open space, again, this is one where, for this year anyway, I think council walker and I probably walked almost every park that we have, as we've talked about some of the benches, those things. There's never any real maintenance included. This includes being able to replace a certain amount of park benches every year, being consistent. We want all of our park benches to look the same as we move forward, so when we pull one, change one, we're putting back a matching, matching park bench and matching other accessories in our parks. You'll see where there's a larger increase in FY27. Again, that's because some of those items FY26 shifted over, but we'll also probably assess those in FY27, determine if that's the proper year or we move forward. Some of these are, we might be looking at grants, and so we'll put them in as a placeholder in the five-year plan, but then as we get grants, then that would reduce that amount because we normally only have a matching amount that we need to come up with. And so we'll continue watching grants as we move forward. City fleet vehicles, this is, this is one where several of these items were shifted, these items that you see here, we're putting in the, in the capital operating account, so that's not hitting a bond. That engine two station reconstruction coming in at 3.7 million, that's where the big increase for FY26 that I mentioned. And then that sets us so that the next four years, we're not looking at a repla, you know, any replacement cost for that, that will complete that project. However, you'll see for FY27, what we have to do is continue assessing, evaluating engine five. That would be the next one that we'll need to really do a good planning on. The amounts are in here, but that's ones that we can take a look at as we move forward. And then the libraries listed in here, they had several items that we pushed for next year. We just did quite a bit with the library this year, current year for the boiler, so some of these items we moved. Some of this require, this, the shifting with some of our maintenance buildings, buildings of maintenance, rather. We, we shifted some of these because our, our new facility manager is just getting on board. He hasn't had that opportunity to really assess all of our facilities as he gets in and doing, and start that work. He's currently spending a great deal of time just learning the system at EL, the geothermal system, getting, getting to know that well. We'll see some recommendations from him moving forward as it pertains to that. And then school, we put consistently just the million dollars. Again, you'll, you'll start seeing the facility improvements come in under the facilities tab moving forward in the future, but $1 million for education currently. And, you know, we'll, we'll get more detail on that. It's basically two projects that they're looking at for that million, but as, as the committee works that through, then we'll get that report back to you on what that million dollars will be. Superintendent, I've discussed it, I think that there's, they're, they're working that through now, so we'll let the committee do that work and then come back before the council. So that's your five-year plan, that's the full, full outlook within your budget book. I think that, you know, a couple of other things just to keep in mind before we wrap up. One, we are, we are consistently watching what's taking place on the horizon for federal funding. That's an area that we either discuss, monitor, have conversations with our congressional staff that's here in Maine. I met with a representative from Susan Collins office Friday. We spent some time having conversations about the outlook of the, what would have been, you know, earmark funds, which was the CDS funds. So we're, we're monitoring that. We know currently it's not looking like those that were part of the FY25 funding that had made it through committee, but no final vote or implementation in the budget. It does not look like those will, will make it. Those were some big projects that we had looked at as far as the water sewer expansion on Broad Street and South Main, as well as some partnerships that we had done with Maine DOT for Route Four, Court Street, I don't think it was, I think it was just Court Street, Court Street and Route Four. So those were, you know, that's, that was somewhere in the ballpark of 12 million plus, I believe, for those, those projects. So those won't be moving forward. What I did have conversations were, you know, at what point if those, it's, it's looking like those might come back for FY26? If those do come back, do the current priority list carry over? Can municipalities withdraw a request because we have a new priority that we may have identified? And that's all being considered. And so, so we'll, we'll look at that. We also had a conversation with Senator King's office and Representative Golden's office about these, and we discussed what those priorities might look like for us, and, and what I shared was I want to make sure I have an opportunity to bring those back from the ca, to the council, make some decisions on that, and then decide how we, we move forward if that opens back up. There's the budget presentation.
Yep. Thank you very much. I just have one quick question about the schedule. I know we'll have time to get into the details of the capital improvement plan in a future workshop, but under facilities and energy, I don't see any line item for the new public safety building. And I'm assuming we're going to have bonding in this someplace. So is there, is there intention to include that? Do we have estimates for some of these out years at this point?
Are you, I want to make sure I, I understand what you're saying. So the, the future bonding for the public safety building?
Mm-hmm.
So we won't see that in the future years because that bonding isn't approved. What I will provide, what I mentioned earlier is a bonding schedule for that, that you'll be able to see that in the future years, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Are there any questions, overall, high-level questions for the manager? Not seeing any, just a couple of comments on process. So as the council knows, we'll have a more in-depth budget workshop to start working the budget next Monday, starting at 5:30. I think that from a process standpoint, what we should be prepared to do is for the counselors to review the additional tabs that the manager provided, right? Because as he said, this is a current services budget, so the administration tab, the counselor tab, the non-municipal tab, and I think that'll be the first item to talk about next Monday night, whether you want any or all of those to be included in the discussion, right? It doesn't mean they'll end up getting approved, but it will move the numbers onto the budget, so we'll see how that's impacting the budget. And then I think the next item after that is to have a discussion about what that does, if any of those are included or not, what the tax levy looks like, and a discussion amongst the counselors about a target that we think we want to work towards. And I think once we process those two items, then we can start working the budget in detail. So questions or thoughts about process for next week? Council Gary.
A week or so ago, I asked for some information dealing with the grab and go funding that we had provided, as well as some other projects dealing with the gardens and whatnot. How soon or when can I get that so I could?
Yeah, I had hoped that.
From my opinion.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I had hoped that I was going to have time tonight to follow up on that. What I'll do is, the beginning of each of the workshops, any of the follow-up from the previous meeting, I'll make sure I tee that up so that we have those items for, for further review. I had hoped to get to that tonight when I just ran out of time. I'll blame it on Dan. Dan went pretty lengthy, so we'll blame it on him. But the, but I'll, I have that. The finance director's already pulled that information regarding the victory garden as well as the grab and go program, and so we have the details of where we currently sit with the current balance on those projects, as well as where, you know, we can report out on where did the money go and give you a good overview on that.
Other questions, comments by the council? If not, we'll be adjourned until 7:00 PM, and we'll reconvene here in the council chambers for the regular council meeting. The March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Auburn City Council meeting will be called to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. If we could have the counselors introduce themselves, starting with Counsel Gary.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Belinda Gary, City Councilor at Large.
Happy St. Patrick's Day. Rick Whiting, Ward One, City Councilor.
Good evening. Tim Cowan, Ward Two, City Councilor.
Good evening. Jeff Harmon, Mayor.
Good evening. Leroy Walker, Ward Five, Counselor.
Good evening. Adam Platt, City Councilor at Large.
And Counsel Milks and Counsel Weisner are unable to join us, um, this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, Vic.
Good evening. I'm Anai Agi. I'm a student representative.
And Phil Kroll, City Manager.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is consent items. There's three consent items tonight. Appointing Bilal Hussain to an unexpired, uh, uh, term on the planning board, uh, reappointing Elizabeth Collier to the Board of Assessment Review, and appointing Jennifer Edwards as the local health officer. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by Counsel Gary and seconded by Counsel Walker. But will be by show of hands. All those that are favor? Opposed? Five having voted in affirmative and none in the negative. The motion is adopted. Next item is, uh, review and approval of the minutes of the March third, twenty twenty-five regular city council meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Not seeing any. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Seconded.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Platt. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? You abstained. So, so four in favor and one abstained, uh, as Counsel Collins was not at the previous meeting. The next item will be the first open session of the evening. Uh, any member of the public that would like to address the council on any item related to city business that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. We'll move on to new business. The first item is Order two-six-zero-three-one-seven-twenty-twenty-five, approving event liquor licenses for the twenty twenty-five signature events, the Auburn Lobster Festival, which is Saturday, May seventeenth, Auburn Blues and Brews, which is Saturday, September sixth, and the New Year's Auburn, which is Wednesday, December thirty-first. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Moved by Counsel Walker.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Collins. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this agenda item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any. Public comment will, is closed. Discussion by the council. Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Five having voted in affirmative and none in the negative. The motion's adopted. Next item is Order two-seven-zero-three-one-seven-twenty-twenty-five, approving the omission of sidewalks in the Loring Avenue reconstruction design. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Collins. For, um, uh, for the public, uh, that might be watching. So this item, in the original, uh, design of, uh, the reconstruction of Loring Ave, a sidewalk was included on one side of the road. There was, um, some sentiment from the neighborhood that a sidewalk not be included. A poll was done by city staff and, um, of the residents, um, that responded, uh, the vast majority, uh, indicated that they would rather not have a sidewalk. Um, so this, uh, item, should it be approved, would remove the sidewalk from the reconstruction project. If there's any member of the public who'd like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Jeremiah Bartlett, one oh-seven Shepley Street, Chair of the Complete Streets Committee. Uh, for point of note, not noted this evening is the, uh, fact that the Complete Streets Committee did take a vote, uh, in support of this outcome. Um, the sentiment among the committee members was that within the context of that particular street, with its, um, proximity to the school, its proximity to a very large green space, and all other streets it connected to having sidewalk facilities, that context suggested to the committee that it, that was, uh, an item of importance. So I just want to provide that context for any discussion purposes this evening. Um, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public who'd like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Hi, Mo Galano. I'm on Loring Avenue in Auburn. Um, I was at that meeting, Complete Streets. The vote was four to three, just so you know on that. Um, and I passed out sheets with some information. Uh, we had two public meetings. Everybody spoke against the sidewalk on the first two. The third meeting was at Complete Streets. Everybody spoke against it, except for one individual who doesn't even live on the street. Um, two council members, and I wrote it in your notes, one mentioned, uh, the fact that, number one, it's, it's single residency, and there is no house lots available to build. So the chances of expansion is basically nothing. So the question was, you know, well, may, people may build apartments above their garages. There aren't many garages on that street where you can build an apartment above it. Number two, there's no house lots. Uh, and that particular individual has a sidewalk on her street, and she said, geez, I like sidewalks. I'm going to vote for sidewalk. Another individual said, well, the zoning might change. She voted for a sidewalk. Both of those reasons, I, I guess I don't see the validity in having a sidewalk. I grew up on that street. I've been there seventy-five years. Nobody's ever got hit by a car. It's a quiet neighborhood. Uh, there's very few kids that walk to school anymore. As you know, they're all bust. And the kids that are around, and there's very few of them, they're not outside anymore. They're inside on their computers. So the amount of traffic from children on that street is virtually none. It's adults walking on the street, and a lot of times, they don't, if there's a sidewalk, they don't use it. They use it in the streets. Never had a problem on that street. I've been there for seventy-five years. That's how old I am. I grew up there, and I'm still there. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, any other members of the public, please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Evening. Mike Adler, eighty-two Loring Avenue. Uh, thank you for putting the, um, Loring Avenue reconstruction in the budget so that it can be done. It actually needs it. But we don't need our sidewalks and curvings. Uh, as far as I can tell right now, right from very this morning, at eight o'clock this morning, there are two students that walk to school on that section of Loring Avenue. That's all there is. The rest are bust. Uh, and if they're not bust, they're driven to school by their parents. They're dropped off in front of Walton School, and if you don't believe me, go sit in front of Walton School before eight-thirty in the morning, see the line of cars pulling in that semicircle there. Um, so, as Mo said, he's been there. He grew up there. I've been walking that street since nineteen sixty-seven. My parents moved up on Ipswich. I had to walk to Walton School when it was seven, eight, nine. There have never been any sidewalks on that street. Um, the other thing that, uh, also that I, I don't want to see happen there, there's no need for curvings in there. Now, the ci, the city engineer says, well, we have to direct the water to the drains. We don't have a drainage problem. There are some puddles on that street. One's in front of my house, and it's because of where they fixed the sewer line later, later on in the years, and the tar has sunk down. Everything drains- Everything drains very well on that street. Now, just think of this for a minute. If you put curvings in there on the side of the street that I live on, there's going to be eight openings to accommodate, for us to be able to get to our back lots, for Mo to get to his back lot. We're talking eight cutouts, that's 16 curb cuts. What is the sense of putting in a strip of curbing? If you're going to have 16 openings, and that, basically 16 curb cuts, eight openings with 16 cuts, I don't see the need in that. The other part of this is, this project is funded by local taxpayer dollars. Let's save the city some money. Don't put the sidewalks in, don't put the curvings in. One of the last numbers that was given out at the Complete Streets meeting was approximately $125,000 just for sidewalks. That wasn't including curvings, that was just sidewalks. So you might even have a little more savings there. Save us some tax dollars. You know, I could go on for many more reasons. I gave a list to Counselor Mr. Walker with much more reasons on it. Only have three minutes, so I urge you, please, do not put these sidewalks in, do not put the curvings in. It is not needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to address the council?
Hi, my name's Dana Staples. I live on 32 Greenfield Drive, just next to Loring. Thanks for letting me talk, I appreciate it. Good evening to everybody. I walk on Loring Avenue every single day of the year, in all weather, and most days twice, some days three times. I'm walking on that street constantly. I think that there's, you know, for me walking, we don't necessarily need sidewalks. But right now, that street is populated by a lot of retired folks, people with full-grown We won't be changing another thing with this street for 30 years, probably longer. I think in the next 30 or 40 years, it's a pretty good chance that you're going to have some kids walking to Walton School. And it makes a whole lot of sense to put a sidewalk on a street that goes directly to a school. It just makes sense. I think for the current population, it makes, I can understand their argument that it doesn't, that we don't need it. I understand it. But I just don't think it's the long-term thing to do for the city. I think it makes so much sense. Put a sidewalk in now, it's the only street that leads to Walton that doesn't have a sidewalk. It just makes sense to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to address the council? So please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Excuse me, Mr. Adler. You've had a chance to speak once. So is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council? If not, the public comment will be closed. Perhaps Mr. Goyette, if you could come forward, we'll have discussion by the council, and perhaps to help with that, can you describe, I guess, two issues? One, if there isn't a sidewalk, can you describe what this street's going to look like as far as width and the ability for pedestrians? And secondly, the purpose of curbing?
Yes. So the street now ranges from 22 to 24 feet, it's going to be reconstructed at 24 feet. I believe that's what you have from information as well. The curbing is to do exactly what he said, direct stormwater, we'll be installing underdrain on that road, and the purpose of underdrain is to collect groundwater. If you don't put curbing, that water, all that water that would be funneled to the catch basin flows off onto the lawns and seeps into the ground and obviously tries to get to the underdrain. And by putting the curbing, it makes the underdrain that much more efficient because it doesn't need to collect all that additional stormwater and water that essentially, that's what causes our roads to destroy in the city of Auburn, well, in Maine because of the frost-thaw cycle. As you can see on Center Street, for example, that's essentially what's destroying the road.
And if the street's going to be 24 feet wide?
Yep.
Is there space between the travel lanes and the curb that'll be paved?
So you can, yes, the road doesn't have a centerline stripe, so cars, I assume, if they'll see a pedestrian, they'll shift over anyways. But essentially, the minimal travel lane width in the state is 10 feet, so you'd have, call it two feet. Most commercial travel lane is 12 to 14 feet, so you can see that it's, it's not essentially, you're not going to have a five-foot shoulder, if that's what you're asking, no.
Thank you. Discussion by the council? Counsel Platt?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate everybody showing up who has a say on this. I, my, I mean, from what I'm reading, what I'm hearing, it seems to me that public opinion is at least on the side of not doing this, based on what I see in front of me. My question, I guess, is with regard to safety, are there any, we've heard that nobody's been injured on this street in years and years and years, I guess, do we know that factually? Are there any indicators from a safety perspective telling us that we need to have sidewalks? Is there, secondarily, is there anything from our previous comp plan that's telling us to do this? Or is this decision being made certainly in the, specifically in the context of this example? If that makes sense.
I can probably start, Dan, if there's anything in here that we need to cover. So the way that the existing Complete Streets or language is set up for the committee is that if there's a discrepancy, then this provides for it to come back. So Complete Streets really, when they're assessing and reviewing projects that are coming forward, this is their, this is built on the way that their review of streets has been consistent with the direction that the council has given them. So they're doing what, the work and the outline of what we look for all streets to consider. But within that language, there was a, an option, and that's if there's a discrepancy between staff and the Complete Streets, to bring that to you to make a decision. Staff's making the recommendation because we're not seeing any traffic safety indicators that would really, for us to say, we agree, this is how it should be designed, we should have sidewalks, let's move forward with it. There were no indicators that came in this process that would have staff disagree with the public on this, and that's why our recommendation was to not include it. Complete Streets will do their job, and that's what they're presenting back before you. But there would be no real, there's no, there's no indicators on this road that would say that we believe that there's a major safety. I think Mr. Staples brings up a good point regarding, you know, what's the future look for this, this street? One would say, what's the future for that school, too? And so that could easily be brought into it. So I think there's a lot of factors that would be considered if we're going beyond, you know, over the next 10 years, anyway. I think there's a lot of factors that could drive what our decision would be and what could change. But currently, the will of the public is to not include it. We support that, but we do see the value in the curbing, and I understand the citizens' recommendation for that, but we're seeing that consistently on all our roads, even though I think Dan would agree, there's good drainage here, but there is, there is a damage that we can see on the, on the ends of the road that would crumble and become an issue in the future.
Just a quick follow-up, I appreciate that. I would say that, for me personally, my personal stance on this is, you know, in light of no huge factors saying we need to have this sidewalk, I'm tending to side with the people who live on that street who don't want it. I appreciate Dana's comments, I, you know, he's probably right. In 30 years, we might be wondering, you know, why we made this decision. I guess, for me, where I'm sitting today, I think, obviously, I have a responsibility to think about the future, but I think for this one, I have a responsibility to vote in favor of the people who live on that street. So I appreciate everybody's perspective, and that's where I stand.
Counsel Cowan?
Just, I wanted to make sure that I'm understanding what we are voting on would be that whether or not to put sidewalks for the entire length, as opposed to one section that's most directly pointed towards a school right now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I, I do, Ms. Staples, I appreciate it, things I was thinking about as well, but at the same time, as Manager Crowell just mentioned, questioning about what schools and what plans we have for 10 to 15 years down the road. So, you know, weighing those two options of, you know, looking at something 30 years down the road in terms of sidewalks versus the current residents, I'm in favor of supporting the current voice of the people on that road.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too support the will of the people and not the need to have a sidewalk put on this street at this point in time. I grew up in New Auburn. I might have had friends that lived around there, but walking to Walton, I never used Loring. Loring is a very quiet street. It doesn't have a whole lot of vehicles coming and going on it. Usually, it's just people that live on that street, maybe a guest or two visiting them, and maybe a postman or a delivery. It's not everybody and its brother driving down that street. There's other streets that are more direct route, especially like going to the school if you're in a vehicle.
Thank you. Counsel Walker?
Thank you. I also agree with the people that live in that neighborhood that the sidewalk is not needed, and we had a special meeting down at Rully Sina just for people that wanted to come and give their opinion, and most, most of the people that were there were against putting a sidewalk in, as well as some didn't want the curbing. But the curbing part, I don't know if everybody totally understands curbing and how it works, but there are many that don't want the curbing as well, but I definitely will vote no for the sidewalk.
Counsel Whiting?
I guess I'm generally in favor of sidewalks in dense urban neighborhoods. This is more of a suburban neighborhood, I'm very familiar with the street. It's a very safe street. There may be changes in the future, but I think it will continue to be a relatively safe street due to the relatively low density of residents on the street. And furthermore, we're in, coming into a budget session where we're going to be struggling to try and keep costs down, and when you have that rare opportunity to not spend money, typically, the public is wanting us to spend money, not to not spend money. It's a no-brainer for me.
Anything further from the council? Counsel ready for the question? Just to be clear, if you are voting yes on this, that's not to have sidewalks, and no would include the sidewalk. Vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, five having voted in affirmative, none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is Order 2803-172025, adopting the revised joint purchasing policy. This will be a first reading. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Counsel Walker, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Cowan. If there are any member of the public that would like to address the council regarding this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, discussion by the council. Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this is a policy not just for us but for the school, from what I understand, have they discussed it, are they in agreement of it?
Mr. Manager.
So this is, will be, first, that's why we have two readings on this, it's a policy, but we're doing the two readings so that, one, we can get your feedback, and then the school committee will review this at their next school committee meeting. They will then take a vote to approve this, and then it'll come back to you with a final reading. So because it is joint, as you said, the school committee needs to adopt it as well.
And if they don't, do we just go ahead with it ourselves?
Ultimately, you, you probably have the authority. So I think that it's a joint, so we want to make sure we're having their feedback, but at the end of the day, the council has the authority on policymaking.
And school staff is aware of the changes that we're looking for?
Other questions, comments by the council? Counsel Platt?
Just a quick comment, just a thank you to Kelsey for including those numbers that I asked for last, last week or last meeting, and I guess just to illuminate to everyone who's watching, I had asked to understand what percentage of purchases were coming in under that threshold, and it turns out 40%, 44% as we see here in our memo, of all purchase orders are in that category. So that means every time, we don't have to fill out that report, it's saving immense amount of time in a department that's probably already under staff. So again, as Rick said on the last vote, to me, this is a no-brainer.
Other questions or comments by the council? I guess perhaps for Ms. Earl or the manager, can you help me understand what a local vendor is? Is that vendors in Auburn, is it Lewiston Auburn, is it, what's the scope of that?
So we would tend to give preference to vendors in Auburn, but local would mean within the local vicinity by definition. So generally, we try to stay with vendors within Auburn if available, would be the recommendation there, but the local vicinity, because Auburn isn't the only place within our local area that has some of these things that we're looking for.
Okay, so I think it would be helpful for the second reading for the staff to recommend the definition of what a local vendor is, so that if we have bids and then an appeal because somebody doesn't think that they got the 3% additional margin in here, I think that would be, would be helpful.
We can. Just to clarify, that local vendor section says that we, preference may be given to a local vendor, it wouldn't require that staff select a local vendor.
Yeah, I understand that, but if Counsel Cowan and I are the bidders, and I'm in Auburn, and he's 10 feet over the line in Turner, does he get it or doesn't he get it? And if it's awarded to me and he appeals, we're going to be going through all this trying to figure it out. So I think it would be easier just to say right up front what the scope of local is, so we avoid all that going forward. Any other discussion by the council? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, five having voted in affirmative, none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to reports, a few things. I attended the Andrus Goggan County Commissioner's Workshop last week. It was focused on the sheriff's facility on Svenner Street. I think it's fair to say that at this point, there is not agreement about the path forward on that at the commission. Basically, I think that the majority, if not all, of the commissioners felt that the proposed cost was too high. I think where that loops back to us is in ongoing discussions regarding where 911 dispatch ends up after central fire station is demolished. So there's nothing firm on this, but I think the scope of what's going to happen at that building is likely to change to get to a budget number that the commission can agree to go on bonding with. So they're attempting to try to go out to bond in a referendum in November, but we'll see how this goes forward. A number of us, Counsel Whiting and I, and quite a large number of folks from the staff, attended the Beyond the Bridge screening in Portland. We had about 85 participants from Lewiston Auburn area, and about 375 people attended. It was great, I think the film was very informative regarding homeless situation and potential solutions, and a very active panel discussion afterwards. And as the manager pointed out, at the budget workshop, there's two town halls relative to the budget on the 27th at 6:00 PM across the hall here in the community room, and on the 29th at 2:00 PM at the library. A number of residents indicated last year that they thought just testifying at the public hearing was a little too constraining, and they couldn't have a conversation about the budget to give the council feedback. So I'll host these two sessions, and members of the public that are interested in providing feedback to the council about the budget, please come in and share your thoughts with us. With that, Counsel Gary? With that, Council Gary.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Council Whiting.
I'd just like to recognize Anaya Eggy and Nora Condit, who got all academic in skiing. I don't know if I missed anybody. Did I miss anyone? I think it was just you two, but maybe another.
Council Cowan.
Nothing tonight.
Council Walker.
Nothing tonight.
Council Pla.
Just a few quick comments. I say this every meeting, but the school committee and school department budget process is ongoing. As you guys saw in the budget today, the school has released its first look at the budget, and it's about a four-point-two percent increase. I have a memo letter from Superintendent Doris that I'll send out to everybody, but it's just a good summary of the starting point for the school department, and I encourage everybody to follow along in that process. And then, second and lastly, just to let my fellow counselors know that I have started sitting on the schools facilities committee. It was a, it was an ad hoc committee. It's now turned into a permanent committee based on the results of the Harriman Facilities Report. It's a very extensive report outlining nearly sixty million dollars of improvements over the next, you know, decade or so. Phil alluded to it today. It's something we're going to have to talk a lot about in terms of CIP over the next decade. But I'll be sitting on that committee, and one of the main, I guess, tasks of that committee is to look into a suggestion from the Harriman Facilities Report, which is bringing the sixth grade up to Auburn Middle School. This is something that's being talked about openly in the meeting, so anybody can read the minutes of that meeting and see what we've been talking about. But this is a multi-year process. This would take a very long time to enact. There's lots of things to study, but that's what I'll be a part of. So, if anybody has any questions in the short term, just reach out and let me know. That's it.
Thank you. Representative Abdullah Ha.
Summer's getting closer, so a lot of nonprofits are going to start opening up, like, stuff for the kids. So, I'd recommend looking in it and, uh, whatever.
Representative Eggy.
I just wanted to say congrats to the unified basketball team. They had their senior night tonight, and it was fun to watch, and they did great. So, congratulations to them, and Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. One, the charter does direct the city manager to present the CIP plan to the planning board. So, at their last meeting, I did walk through what we had spent some time discussing tonight. I also expanded on that and talked about roughly the ninety million dollars' worth of infrastructure projects that we currently have in one phase or another, whether it's by design or approval through congressional earmark funds, or they're under beginning construction. So, several of these are in different phases, but that's a big lift on staff. I think I've mentioned this before, but I want to make sure you're aware of that. And then also, this past week, I spent time meeting with our congressional staff representatives discussing federal funding, what's the outlook of some of our projects. Some of them for the FY '25 had been approved through budget, through committee rather, and not approved in the budget at this point. Currently, the way the CR looks, looks like that's not going to move forward. So, that means those projects will not be included for approval. That includes the water sewer expansion that we had hoped to move forward with on Broad Street and South Main, as well as projects that we had partnered with Maine DOT for Route Four and Court Street. And so, in conversations with the staff representatives, there'll be a determination at some point on whether or not those projects will continue as a priority with feedback from the municipalities that, or entities that had supported those, or if we have other priorities that we've identified because we've either sought other funding or shift in priorities, then we will want to make sure that we're bringing that before them for consideration. That's it.
Thank you. The next item will be the second open session of the evening. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council regarding city business that's not on the agenda tonight, please approach the podium and provide your
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is John Cleveland. I live at 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. I'm getting up because I wanted to follow up. At the last meeting, I had asked several questions, and Mr. Holmes was very kind in providing those answers that he had available. And then he did send a letter out to myself and a city clerk, and they were included in your minutes. It's my impression, though, that many of our Auburn city residents probably don't read the minutes on a regular basis, exciting as they are. So, I thought it would be useful just to summarize for you the answers that we received so that the public can be aware of them as well. This, of course, I'm referring to the Fifteen Academy Street housing project, proposed to be fifty-three units of market rate housing in that area. Out of curiosity, it had nothing to do with this council. I did look up at when that was approved, to go ahead, the TIF was approved to proceed, and that was on December twelfth, 2023. That was the last meeting of the previous mayor and council before they left. So, there is both a tax increment financing agreement and a credit enhancement agreement for that project. The city owned lots on that particular area. There were two lots. They were sold for fifty thousand dollars for the sum of the two lots. Plus, there was a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar development incentive, which is a cash provision to the developer. That was also approved, and funds are available for that, and they'll be receiving it, far as I know. The TIF is a thirty-year TIF. It runs until June thirtieth, 2054. I won't be back at that time to make any further comments on it. In addition to that, the credit enhancement agreement is a twenty-five-year credit enhancement agreement. And in that agreement, the developer, Highgate Development LLC, will receive half of the total amount of taxes paid every year until they get up to a million dollars. Based on the pro forma that was done in the documents, it's anticipated well over two million dollars in tax revenue will be paid over that period. So, very likely, they're going to get the million dollars going forward for that particular project. Information, it wasn't immediately available at the last meeting, but I read the eighty-page document, and I found in there that the manager for the project is Matt Leonard, actually in agreement between Highgate Development LLC and the city. In addition to that, it also did list in the documents a member, the chair of the board of the LLC and the president of the board, which is the same person. And that person is Dr. Daniel Steeces, S.T.E.E.C.E.S., C.E., excuse me. He's a medical doctor. He's an OBGYN doctor, and he practices out of Beverly, Massachusetts. And he's the chair and president of that corporation at LLC, which will be receiving the fifty percent of the funds. From my memory, and I certainly will stand corrected, there is no other housing package that has market rate rents that has received a credit enhancement agreement in this city unless there was a direct benefit to the community, subsidized rents, or infrastructure that was public infrastructure that could be used. I think this is the only one. So, I think this is an appropriate time after having your introduction to your budget, and as you go through this process, it would be an apt time to reflect as you make very difficult decisions going forward. How many more of these sweetheart deals can we afford to fund when you're going to make difficult decisions about services and taxes coming up? Now, hopefully, this is the last one.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council? If so, please come forward and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. For information for the public, the council has two executive sessions tonight. There's no action expected after the first one, which is an economic development matter. There is action expected to follow the second executive session, so the council will come back into regular session and take any necessary action on that. So, with that, is there a motion to enter executive, excuse me, enter executive session pursuant to one MRSA Section 405 Sub 6C for an economic development matter?
Motion to move.
Seconded by Council Walker, seconded by Council Cowan. All those in favor? Opposed? Five having voted in affirmative, none in the negative. The council will be in executive session. The council will be in executive session.
So the City Council will be out of executive session and back in regular session. Council waiting.
I have an order number 29-03172025. Ordered that the City Council hereby adopts a written decision to immediately remove Daniel Bilado from the Arvin Water District Board of Trustees for cause after notice and hearing.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Cowan. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Five having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. As there is no further business in front of the council this evening, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Council Platt, seconded by Council Walker. All those in favor? Opposed? The council will be adjourned.